How's it going?
Good.
We've been watching your house. You didn't get in by Christmas, but you're close.
Well, there's a Christmas every year.
Did you just? That's true.
Well, tell Sean that's a well.
Getting ready for next year.
There's a Christmas every year.
Well, we've been joking about the ones across the street that two of them are gonna get done before yours is.
He built that wall in two and a half months.
How did they do that?
I don't know. But he did.
So when's the other one gonna get done?
About the same.
It'll probably be done for mine. I can't get my idiots out there to go to work.
Well, we saw somebody there last week. We found a house.
Did you?
We sold the ha- sold the building and we found a house.
You sold the building? So who's moving into the building?
I can't say.
Oh.
It's exciting though. I'm really, really excited about it.
Awesome.
Because they're gonna live in it, they're planning to live in it unless something changes.
Is it local people or are they moving here from out of town?
Yeah, they're, I would call them local.
Okay, good. Awesome.
They have a business here.
It's even good or better? It's even better. Okay. Bill? You ready? All right, good morning. Hey, um, Bill, we might wanna close the doors. I think we got noise from out there in the foyer. Well, good morning, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Tuesday, January twelfth, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Dennison. Welcome, everybody, this morning. Happy New Year. We're off to a good start. It's hard to believe we're already twelve days into it, isn't it? But anyway, um, turn this down just a tad if you would. It's got a little bit of feedback to it. Our first order of business this morning will be for a roll call.
Chair Charles Shear.
Here.
Vice Chair Brett Evans.
Here.
Spence Redwine.
Here.
And Mary Carom.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Give you a little bit of housekeeping this morning. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body with the exception of Platts and site plans, which our decisions are final on those. So any zoning case or other, other case other than a plat or, or a site plan will be passed on to City Council for their final approval, which will be at their nineteenth of January meeting. Okay, which is a week from today, uh, tomorrow, yesterday. Whatever. One of those days in there. Check your agenda.
Yeah, check your agenda.
Call channel ten, channel twelve, they'll let you know. Anyway, um, so we're gonna give you opportunity to come on public hearings. We'll give you opportunity to come and speak. Um, ask that you fill out a speaker's card if you haven't already, uh, for us. When you come to the lectern, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record. Uh, there's not a whole lot of us this morning, so I'm not gonna invoke the three-minute rule unless somebody just decides to get windy. And, uh, but hopefully that's not gonna happen. So that being said, we're gonna move into our items for individual consideration. Mr. Medina. Need to do the minutes?
Yes, these are just the minutes.
All right, so we need to hold discussion, take action on the minutes from our November twenty-fourth meeting. Are there any errors, omissions, additions that need to be made? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for November twenty-fourth.
You have a motion?
A second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Item four B would be to receive, hold discussion, take actions on our minutes from the December eighth of two thousand twenty meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the December eighth, two thousand twenty meeting as presented.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye.
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 Seeing none, opposed? Okay. Um, didn't we have a meeting at the end of December? Do we only do one meeting in December?
Yes, we only did one meeting in December.
Okay, I was thinking we had another one. Okay. All right. All right, we'll move into public hearings. Item five A, Mr. Medina.
Thank you. This is item five A. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of Lot One Thorpe subdivision and adjoining tracks to the east to be known as Lot One Block Eight Closets and Garages, case number twenty twenty dash zero six three RP. For reference, this is the existing closet and garages along Morton Street, um, north northeast of the Brahms in the highway overlay. The applicant's requesting approval of the proposed replat. The replat meets all City of Dennison requirements. And the replat is required for further site development. So again, here's the aerial. Brahms is gonna be over to the west. And there's Morton Street running north to south. The outline is the proposed replat location. So the replat does a couple of things for us. It sets the developer up to move forward with their site plan. The site plan based on staff's recommendations and review that we've already provided. It would combine some of the lots, as you can see, there's kind of remainder lots at the bottom, so it would make all that contiguous, as well as dedicating adequate fire lane easements and drainage easements. And we'll file the plat pending approval, also pending final civil engineering and site plan approval as well. Here's the zoning of the subject property. It's zoned commercial. If you recall, at the last meeting, it was early December. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit for this site. City Council approved that CUP pending plat, site plan, and civil review. So we're steadily moving along. Present for any questions that you may have, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions, staff? Thanks, sir. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final engineering and site plan approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Before we go to item five B, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, uh, apologize for my rudeness. I, I wanna introduce our new team member this morning. Um, John Webb is joining us, and he's gonna be a part of our, our, our planning team. So John, it's good to have you with us this morning, and welcome to Dennison.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
You betcha. Item five B.
This is item five B. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of the initial zoning of two point seven acres, more or less, located along Cathy Drive, Dennison, Texas. Property ID number three nine five five six five, to single-family five zoning district. Case number twenty twenty dash one twenty-six A. I don't believe the applicant's here today. The applicant is pursuing the development of a nine-lot subdivision. Keep in mind that this recommendation is only for the zoning. The plat will have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, whenever that's ready at a later time. So as mentioned, the applicant's requesting the initial zoning of SF five, and will be submitting civil engineering plans. So this is the subject property outlined in yellow. You have West Crawford running east to west, and one thirty-one going north to south. It's on the corner of Cathy Drive and Shane Court. Here's the zoning map. That red circle is the subject property. You have a brighter yellow, that's SF seven five directly to the east, and then you have SF five to the south. Now, our comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed as residential in nature. And I don't know why our Platts did not format properly on the agenda. But that being said, the applicant's pursuing SF five zoning. Staff does recommend approval. I'm present for any questions that you may have. I don't know why it didn't come out like that.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Applicants not here this morning? Okay. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Uh, discussion? Any discussion? This is, this is the zoning case. We talked about this yesterday in staff meeting. That even though that this is an SF five zone district, um, in the midst of seven point five, I think due to the cost of the lot, the cost of the development, I don't think you're gonna see an SF five product developed on this. So I'm not really frightened of that. Now, there is a, there is an issue, I think staff is gonna take it up with the developer, um, on a flag lot that, um, they're creating, and it'll have a thirty-foot width, uh, on that. And I'm assuming, um, that's gonna be taken up with the applicant prior to the plat coming forward, correct?
Yes, so the plat...
Yeah, so the plat will come before this body again for approval. Um, again, I apologize, I meant to include the plat, but it just didn't format right when I, when we printed out these agendas. Um, just for reference, but what you're seeing is the applicant is proposing to do fifty to about seventy-foot wide lots, give or take, there's about nine of them. That will front off of Cathy. The remaining piece will actually have only a thirty-foot of frontage onto Cathy, shooting up north, creating a flag lot. Now, the width of the lot that they're proposing would meet the requirements, but we strongly wanna try and, and move away from flag lots where we can. So those are further discussions that we're gonna have with the applicant whenever that, that plat comes through this body.
I've got a question, Bill, on the, because there's obviously not utilities at this point. Is, can you speak to what's happening in that area as far as it's all gonna be underground?
That's correct. So if you see on our screen now, there's that detention pond southeast of the, the yellow outline. There's a sewer line that runs right there. So Public Works is having them draw up and submit civil engineering plans, and the developer would be responsible for extending the sewer up along Cathy to service those lots, and it'd be completely underground. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, since there's no one here to speak in favor or in opposition to, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this case.
I move to recommend approval of initially zoning the approximately two point seven acres to single-family five zoning district.
Second.
Have a motion with a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. Item five C.
This is item five C. Receive report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval to rezone twenty-six thirty Randall Lake Road, Dennison, Texas, from Light Industrial, so that the entire property is zoned agriculture. Case number twenty twenty dash one thirty-two Z. The twenty eighteen comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed as residential in nature. Speaking with the applicant, they do intend on developing the site as residential, but they also wanna maintain agriculture uses to the rear of the property as well. So city staff does recommend approval. A single-family residence is permitted within agricultural zoning. Here's kind of a zoomed-out aerial of the property. You have seventy-five running north to south as it curves kinda towards the high school. Randall Lake Road runs north to south. And here is the subject property with adjacent zoning. So what's triggering the request for rezone is, for some reason, the property is kind of split zone, Light Industrial towards the front. So the applicant intends on plating this at a later time and selling a lot to a family member. However, the applicant and the family member would have a tough time getting a CO. They wouldn't be able to get a CO because of the light industrial. So this would clean that up, allow them to perform their agriculture uses while also create their homestead. At time of plating, they'll also be providing the city with required easements. You don't see the sewer and water lines here, but there's quite a bit of infrastructure towards the rear, and the applicant will be providing those easements to us. So we recommend approval of the zoning, and I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval, changing the zoning of the subject property from Light Industrial so that the entire property is zoned agricultural zoning district.
A second. Have a motion with a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Item five D.
This is item five D. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on the approval of the initial zoning of approximately forty-six acres located at seven three five zero FM fourteen seventeen, Dennison, Texas, property ID number one one three seven twenty, to Light Industrial zoning district. Case number twenty twenty dash one forty A. So the applicant, um, is pursuing annexation because they're needing city utilities, in this case, city water. So they've worked with the Public Works Department to extend the water line along fourteen seventeen. So you can see the property outlined in yellow here. Directly to the southwest and south, you have Caterpillar, which is a Light Industrial property, as well as, I believe they're either oil or gas drilling services as well, extraction services. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, Caterpillar is zoned Light Industrial. The forty-six acres currently sitting outside the city wishes to come in to Light Industrial with Light Industrial zoning so they can move forward with that type of development. Whenever they're ready to move forward, they will need to submit site plan, plat, civil engineering plans, just like any other development. So I'm present for any questions that you may have, and staff does recommend approval. And just as a reminder, the request right now is just a recommendation on the zoning. The annexation will be going to City Council pending a recommendation of the zoning on the nineteenth.
Any questions of staff? Bill, I think that... Even though they wanna plat ten acres into one track and then link twenty acres.
Uh, that's the next case.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to get at is the zoning gonna blanket all of, all of the property?
Yes, so in this case, the, the zoning would be the entire forty-six acres. Um, on the next item, we'll have to go look at the survey they, they submitted, but I think it would just be the ten acres that they requested to be annexed. And we can get into that shortly.
Today, we're talking about everything, so regardless of how it's platted up, when the plat comes back to us, the zoning can be consistent on every bit of that property.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions of staff? Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any discussion among the commissioning? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of initially zoning the approximately ten acres to agricultural zoning district.
Forty-six. Forty, forty-six point nine acres.
I'm sorry.
You said ten, it's forty-six point nine. It's the one before.
I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Forty-six point ten.
So amend it where it's just forty-six point nine acres.
Aye.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry. All in favor? Aye.
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 Let's move on to item, uh, five E.
That's where I was.
That's where you were.
We're over there.
Mary's always been forward thinking.
All right, this is item five E. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of the initial zoning of ten acres, more or less located at seventy-one oh two FM fourteen seventeen, property ID number one one three seven two seven, to agricultural zoning district. Case number twenty twenty dash four four A. So as of the last case, the applicant has been working with the Public Works Department to annex into the city so that we can obtain public water or city utility, city water, and they also help pay for the infrastructure to be extended. So the default zoning when a property is annexed is agricultural zoning district. Looking through the application submitted by the applicant, there was no other zoning requested, so that's the, the recommendation there. Also note that the applicant is submitted or requesting only the front ten acres of the property be annexed, outlined in yellow. It's actually much larger, a much larger piece, which is about approximately thirty acres, as you can see here, outlined in blue. So this is an aerial. Driving by the property, even though the applicant is, did not request a commercial or Light Industrial-type zoning, it appears that there's some sort of commercial-type building existing on the site. It looks relatively new. So staff recommends, well, staff, we acknowledge that there could be a potential issue with the applicant obtaining a CO later on. If it's zoned agriculture, them trying to obtain a commercial zoning or commercial use would not conform with the zoning, so they would have to come back and request for a rezone later on. It's generally not a problem, and we can, we can fix that as it comes. Once we identify the particular use, we can maybe recommend a zoning that fits that, that use. So those are something that we can fix later on. Again, the applicant's only requesting to annex the first ten acres, and the zoning is, is ag, are proposed to be ag. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and staff recommends approval.
Questions? All right, thank you, Bill. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Discussion? Anybody got any concerns, questions from this one? No? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of initially zoning the approximately ten acres to agricultural zoning district.
Second.
Did you say that in the end, Spence?
I move to recommend approval initially zoning the approximately ten acres to agricultural zoning district.
Okay. Wasn't sure what it hurt.
It's okay. I'll take a curtain call.
Grandbaby kept me up late last night.
That's all right.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Charlie, will you close the public hearing for us?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't close the public hearing on it, but it's officially closed. Okay. Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Let's say you have on the agenda receiver report from the Neighborhood Services Manager regarding code compliance, projects, and priorities. Many of you know Robert, and our Neighborhood Services, uh, manager in the Community Development Department. Uh, worked with the city for, for many years. He gave a presentation to council at the last week's council meeting on just kinda what goes on in code and compliance. And the reason I brought this to you is that, you know, y'all are involved in kind of the initial development of the city. You, you see site plans and Platts and zoning cases, so you set the stage of what's coming on in the future. Of course, our Building Inspection Department is overseeing the construction over it, makes sure that the structures meet our code. And then it falls upon Robert, uh, kinda to take over for the long term, what I call the viability, sustainability of all these projects and buildings and homes in Dennison. And again, just wanna have him come up and give a presentation that, uh, he gave to the council. I think it's, it's good for you to kinda also see what goes beyond, uh, the initial, uh, planning and zoning in the city.
Morning, Robert.
Morning, y'all. How are ya? Glad to get to share this with you, for sure. So a little bit more background. So, uh, code compliance activities have been a priority for our council for going on a couple of years now, and really have made a strong push, um, to make improvements in town. Um, so council has asked me a couple of times a year to give them some updates of what's going on in code and some of the projects and priorities that we have. So again, like John said, I gave this to council last, last week, so again, be a pleasure to give to you guys as well. So a big portion of what I like to do with them is to kinda show them some of the successes that, um, have happened through code last year, one way or another. So I put a, uh, a lot of four, of four residential remodels together. What they all have in common was that they were initiated through code, but through that process of working with the owner, the owner basically had to go, I cannot make the repairs that are required. These were not owner-occupied properties. Uh, three of them, as a matter of fact, were vacant, uh, through the whole process. Um, and what's important about that is without the, the proactive code enforcement, um, activities or code compliance activities, these structures may just remain in the same state for an, um, an undetermined amount of time. So we have to go out and be proactive, working out with these, uh, homeowners to see these repairs get done. So just sharing a little bit, six oh nine East Morton, and what that turned into. Um, of course, that makes a dramatic improvement or impact on that neighborhood. Also, there's nine twenty-four West Chestnut. Um, this house, it makes a big impact as well, but that's literally just replacing a little bit of rotten wood and paint. That's not even a full remodel, but on that block, that is impactful. This is twelve hundred West Johnson. This house actually caught fire, and it was either, you know, uh, is this gonna turn into a demolition? Or are we gonna be able to remodel this house? So the owner realized, again, they can't, they can't do the extensive work that needs to be done. Um, it was sold, and an investor comes in, of course, they might get a, uh, a nice place there. And lastly, this, this one's my personal favorite, uh, remodeling town that, that was initiated through code, for sure. Uh, three oh eight Jenny. This is right across the street from Maze Elementary. So this turned into this new property, and it just, again, makes a huge visual impact there.
I've been watching this one.
Yeah. It's, uh, I mean, like I said, it's one of my favorites. I, uh, I like white, white houses with a dark roof and, and the cedar accents. So it again, looks really good. So twenty twenty in review, uh, code compliance activities. Uh, give you a few details. So code worked a total of just over fifty-six hundred code cases in twenty twenty, and that is with shutting down for COVID essentially for about two and a half months. We basically backed off from, you know, mid-March through early June and did not do a lot of proactive work. So in comparison, in twenty nineteen, we worked just over seven thousand cases. So we were down about fourteen hundred, but that's that essentially two and a half months of really not doing a lot. Back in twenty eighteen, code worked fifty-three hundred cases, so we were still in twenty, in twenty twenty above twenty eighteen's numbers, even shutting down. So what basically that tells you is, in the couple of years since this has been a priority for council, the push is, um, you can see it in the numbers. Uh, a couple of things that'll jump out at you right there. The biggest code compliance issue in the city, and it's not unique to Dennison, and it's unique to every, um, every city that I've ever talked to, is that you have to tell people to maintain their line. Twenty-six hundred and forty-two code notices went out for, for, for high grass in Dennison. We are trying to find ways to make that number go down. Sir?
I just wanna say that I had one of my lots that qualified for the high grass.
I wasn't gonna s-
And I paid my fine. For the record.
I wasn't gonna point you out, Charlie, I promise. So a couple of other things that are important to note on here is the six hundred and twenty-six complaints we received from, uh, citizens about their neighbors' houses or something. That number has gone down, uh, for a couple consecutive years. Uh, that's important to me is, and I would want to see the trend continue 'cause that means there's not as much out there to complain about that. That means we're getting things done. That means we're getting things done, so that's still a big number, but it did come down and hopefully that trend continues. The last one to point out on there is, those first houses that we noted, those were all worked through code compliance as a minimum property standards house, meaning that they did not meet our minimum standard of what a house should look like, whether that's roof, paint, rotten wood, could be accessory buildings, a number of things. Code initiated a hundred and seventy-three of those cases last year and completed a hundred and forty-six. Now, the ones I showed you make big impacts. Sometimes they're not nearly as impactful, they're smaller things, but nonetheless, we completed a hundred and forty-six of those. So just some useful, interesting information, we, in the ten fiscal years between twenty ten and twenty twenty, the city has demolished four hundred and sixty-five substandard structures in Dennison. That's a big number. If you have been from Dennison for a long time, you'll know we used to have those on every street corner. That number is gonna start trending down as we don't have as many of those in our neighborhoods, which is a good thing. Just last year, we did twenty-seven additional demolitions and started the cases on thirty more, so we still have some that'll work through the pipeline, but they won't be near as big a numbers as we have historically for the past ten years. So moving forward, some of the initiatives code will have going is, we will continue to work our minimum property standards heavy in Dennison. Minimum property standards wasn't an ordinance till twenty twelve, so with Dennison being, you know, established in the late eighteen hundreds, you're looking at a hundred years of not having a property maintenance code for people to have to live up to, so we're playing a lot of catch-up right now. But again, making progress. So some of our priorities of how we move forward with minimum property standards, we look at a few things. One of the, one of the places we'll be going into is neighborhoods where there's development going on or there's ongoing redevelopment. So we have, what, last year, a hundred and seventy some odd new homes built? Well, half of those or so were built in the infill neighborhoods where, you know, it's just a vacant lot in the middle of a neighborhood, they build a new house and the two houses around it or beside it all need minimum property standards works. Well, we try to use that momentum of a new build to try to put the pressure on the neighboring properties to try to come up to standard as well. Also, other high visibility, we call corridors or high visibility areas. For us, that is what are our main thoroughfares through Dennison, our schools and our parks. We look at it like this is, if someone comes to Dennison and they're trying to decide, do I want to put my kid in school here? Do I want to open up my business? Where are they going? These are the places they're gonna travel to, these are the things they're gonna want to look at. We have to make sure that we put our best foot forward in these situations, so that's how we come to those being a focus area. We've been working in the downtown area for the past couple of years, trying to get all our downtown buildings into minimum compliance. That is an ongoing process, we've still got a few dominoes to fall on that, but have made a ton of progress there. So every year, staff tries to find ways to have highly impactful improvements. And as we have moved through twenty twenty and we're looking at what do we need to do, we recognize that our, our corridors and our commercial buildings really need addressing specifically auto repair, auto sales, tire shops specifically. I threw a couple of pictures up here that you can see examples of as we're, as I'm talking, but we're gonna be dealing with these businesses individually and working with them. It's gonna be a long haul process, but looking at their CEOs, looking at, at their zoning, looking at their CUPs, do they have the right screening? These types of businesses, it's been needed to be addressed for quite some time. We are going to try to tackle that in the next year. Like I said, it'll, they're kind of all unique of what they need, so through planning and zoning and building and code, we'll be meeting with them individually, try to help them get their properties up to, up to the standard that we need them to be as the city progresses. So again, it'll, that's a long haul project that we'll be looking at in the next year. So anytime I get to speak to a group like this, I always leave, I always leave with this, is there are two perspectives of Dennison. One is if you have lived here for a long time, you know that we have come a long ways. The other one, and it's a hundred percent accurate, is if you're visiting here and or just moved here, that you know we still have a long way to go. But I'll promise you, in the past two years, going back probably a few years before that, we've come a long ways and we'll just keep chipping away at it for sure, so. That's it, if you got any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any comments?
That was great.
Yeah, I mean, let me just say that code enforcement, like our Building Inspection Department, we're blessed that we've got the personnel that we have in there, because these guys will work with the problems. There's those of us who just forget, honest to goodness, I got a letter that my grass had been mowed and they sent me a bill for it. I didn't even remember that I owned the lot. Okay? I read the letter and go, this is a mistake, and then all of a sudden, don't know me women, we bought this lot, so. But, but they, they will work with, with people and, and, and to try to help them, and a lot of, you know, I hear a lot of complaints that we're not making changes quick enough. What you gotta understand is there are a lot of laws that these guys have to comply with, you know, when it comes to dealing with people's properties, and so it's just a lengthy process to get things done, but if people want to complain about what's going on, we're not getting things changed enough, just encourage them to take a drive on Sunday afternoon and drive through the infill.
Right.
Development. And they will see how much change has been made in this town. It's amazing when you drive up and down these streets, the way they look now compared to what they did four or five years ago. It's just, and my hats off to you guys for, for doing a great job. One question I wanted to ask you, Robert, is in the new program that the city has come forward with, that would allow developers to, to purchase the liens that we have on properties and then exercise foreclosure rights to, to obtain that property, where are we with that process? Where is it as far as, has it been adopted, has the council approved it? When are we gonna start seeing those, those, those properties?
So obviously, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I know that we've moved into agreement to reassign the liens on, I want to say around forty properties currently. We've probably got another twenty-five to thirty applications in for others that have inquired about a lien on a specific property. So we have, we've had some progress. We've got, we've got seventeen hundred plus liens on properties across the city. We did make a decision recently that we would only sell the liens on vacant lots. Initially, we were doing that on basically anything that had a lien on it, it could be reassigned, but the goal of the program from the beginning was to redeveloped lots that, you know, the owner is, can't find them, don't have any interest, you know, or someone's passed away, kids don't even really know they own the property, as an avenue for developers to acquire these hard to develop lots. So just doing vacant lots gets us back to the real intent of the program from the beginning. So we've had some movement, we've still got a lot of lots we can reassign though. You know, some of them are, are more desirable than others, so, but I've spent a lot of time on, you know, the streets of Dennison and I know where they're at, and there's still a lot of lots that if people would be proactive about locating them and doing some due diligence, there's some good lots to build on, for sure, so.
I've got a similar question. With the corridors being important, I know we've had some problems with some of the auto lots that are along ninety-one. I don't know if those are, any of those are included in the process you just described, but it used to be the, if the, if the auto lot was vacant for a certain period of time, then it couldn't be grandfathered in to move forward with that same industry. Is that still, how does that sit?
So we will take a look at every auto lot that's in operation currently to see if they're in compliance with their zoning, their CUP and, and all those details. As far as if one goes out of business and another one wants to move in, that's something we would address internally as staff. We haven't specifically talked about that leading up to it. It's more about the ones that are in operation that have just mass numbers of inventory or multiple wrecked vehicles that sit visible or something, something to that effect. But we, that would, to answer your question again though, is if it's, if it's not gonna be grandfathered in, that would be, that would be something staff would talk about if an applicant wanted to, to open up there.
I, I don't remember the answer to this question, but are our CEOs issued not necessarily to the business, but to the business owner?
I think it's to the owner, because I've had several CEOs recently come by for a change of ownership, so we'll look at the code and say, well, it's been operating as auto dealership, it's already got the zoning, sign off on it. But what we're finding, I think what Robert is getting at, is that some of these properties don't have a CO, or they should have had a CUP and they didn't, or they've been closed for four or five months, so all that's lapsed.
So in the case of illegal non-conforming use, so where we've got a car dealership that's operating because of that, it's grandfathered at that point in time, he can't sell that business to a new owner and then that new owner obtain a, a CO because of illegal non-conforming use, correct?
He can't. The use, the use has to be abandoned, vacated for a certain period of time, typically in Texas, it's six months.
Okay.
But if the lot has not been, what we call technically abandoned, it can change ownership because zoning runs with the land, so it's only if that business were to cease operation, if they could sell it, if it's a, if it's a legal non-conforming use, it can transfer to another similar to say legal non-conforming use, as long as the use is not abandoned.
Okay, okay.
So is that up to citizenry to notice that it's vacant? Or how do, how do we flag that?
Hopefully, we are out patrolling and watching and looking for the same.
Well, the termination of utilities too is another one.
Yeah, exactly. And there's also been some case law where, as long as they keep the utilities on and pay for water and electricity, we had some court case saying it's not been abandoned and the business is closed, so something we have worked with our city turning on, if we want to proceed that, we got that happening.
Anything else?
Thanks for Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
You know, I've been in this area since nineteen eighty-four and worked for, you know, a lot of cities with some older neighborhoods, and, and cities and towns are judged by their schools and their neighborhoods. If people don't feel like they've got a safe neighborhood, attractive neighborhood, and they don't feel like there's a good school district, it's very hard, one thing, to recruit new people to come to town and also keep the people that you want to keep in the city. So the code enforcement, it's, it's a thankless job, but it's extremely important. Mr. Chairman, the last item is just something I've added to the agenda, it's something in my past. I will start including the, the past city council agenda with results. Many items, you'll see the ones that you voted on, so you'll see, you know, that the council took action on some of the zoning cases that, that you saw. And then it's just information of what the council's doing too, so you have all the other agenda items. And then the last thing, and this is not on the agenda, so we really cannot make a decision, but I'll bring it up to a future discussion item, is the start time of the meeting. My practice has been that usually they're later in the day, so more citizens and people who work can't attend the meetings. I don't know where the ten o'clock came from. I certainly don't have a problem with it because it's, you know, Bill and I can get out of here, you know, sometimes earlier in the evenings, that's great, but I'm really, I've talked, I had this conversation with the chairman, really defer to you, if the ten o'clock start time works for you, if you feel like a, a later afternoon time, you know, early evening, but again, it's something that we probably put on a future, you know, agenda item for discussion and to see if, if not, we want to change the start time to the meeting. Mr. Chairman, anything?
Well, this is the only P and Z that I've ever been part of that met in, in, in the daytime. Typically, most, like you and I talked about yesterday, most cities that meet early are, like Dallas, large cities that have an enormous agenda that they could take all day long to get through. You know, and I think that, if it is correct, I think if you do it later or an evening meeting, it does give the citizens more opportunity because obviously they're, most of them are at work, and I think that's why we don't see a lot of participation from the citizens because we meet at ten in the morning.
Have we had people complain that they didn't come to the meeting?
Um, not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, I've been on this for a long time.
You know, I mean, I was pretty, I was shocked whenever, when I, well, I was shocked when I first went on the Board of Adjustments because, you know, they meet at ten o'clock the same, same way, but.
Only complaint I've heard is the recording is difficult to hear. That's just one person.
No. So, I mean, I mean, our meetings don't really last typically more than thirty, forty-five minutes in our agenda cases. And I know that we're, we're meeting twice a month, I mean, I, if we go to an evening meeting, and I think, looking back at the two thousand twenty agendas, we really, I don't think there was actually a need, well, the problem we have now is the plat problem that we have with the state. I guess that's why we went to the two meetings mainly, just for that reason. But I don't have an objection to moving the meeting if, you know, if, if we need to. To me, it's, you know, I can be here at six o'clock as easy as I can at ten. Sometimes it is a little bit inconvenient for me because I have to schedule business meetings around what's going on here, you know, but that's, again, twice a month, I know it's happening, so we just kind of work.
Again, yeah.
And I don't mean to exaggerate, just we may want to have a couple more alternates because there, there are a lot of times where Tuesday at six-thirty, I, I believe Dallas or Austin.
Yeah, Tuesdays, evenings are hard for, for me with kids stuff and everything else that, you know, to do, especially if it's twice a month, I already have enough stuff that's hard enough to fit in for, for evenings. I mean, the mornings work fine, but I wouldn't be opposed to doing afternoon, I'd just rather not do evening. I mean, if you want to start it at, at like four o'clock or something or whatever, then, you know, where it's maybe not there, but if they could, you know, if somebody wanted to come, they could take off.
Another way to look at it is this, if the case is that important-
Right.
-to someone, they can make arrangements to leave work for a little while or to do what they needed to in order to come down here and let us know their feelings. They can mail it or just put it in our packet, and so, I mean, I don't know that the fact that we're meeting at ten, inconvenience people, they still, still give them the opportunity to just speak their piece, whether it be at ten o'clock or six o'clock, you know, or to even make a, to do a letter of opposition or anything. We don't even get, you know, much of those.
I've heard Charlie talk about the two AM sessions and I would be going to sleep about that point. I think that the morning is a much more efficient time to have a meeting. I think we're all a little bit more alert and in work mode at that time.
I think for yourself, more.
Did I say that?
I'd be asleep.
I'd be asleep.
They get to be a little bit revoked, I mean, if you think of the citizen at six PM, their, their work is done and now they have a void, so I think we value our time during the day.
I've been, I've been president of enough organizations where I've, I've had to friendly ways suggest that the meeting take place within an hour because then people stick to business and they get it done. If you have an open-ended meeting, I don't care what time of day it is, there are those who will use up more time than necessary.
Well, y'all certainly run an efficient meeting and lead for the city council. I'll be honest with you, in the thirty-plus years, this is one of the most efficient city councils I've ever seen, how they run the meetings, and hopefully we can continue to take their lead, and I know the chairman does that, so. But again, I just want to make sure that it was convenient for you, that it wasn't interrupting your work schedule, your day schedule, and we can, we can leave it as is or we can continue the conversation later on with, if we have, you know, other members.
I think for the time being, let's leave it as is for the time being, and let's just look at as we go into the year, see how our, our agenda load is, because I do see where it could be, you know, like, I mean, I don't have kids anymore, but I can see, I know what it's like when you got kids and you got soccer and you got baseball and you got-
Yeah, I think we need to be flexible in this town. I see the, just in Main Street, the change in the energy of the businesses and business owners, there's a younger crowd coming in and we don't know what it's gonna look like in ten years, it might be something totally different.
Spence jogs in the afternoon and he jogs far enough that he jogs me and him both, I don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, John, appreciate it. Welcome aboard, good to have you with us.
Absolutely.
Any other business to come before the commission? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at ten forty-nine AM. Thank you, all.